Wagley?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
And Ms. Kunkel is going to come a little late. She has a previous engagement. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to introduce the state of America into the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice.
Are there any questions regarding the meeting's agenda? If not, I will take the motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Most from Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mission statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things but in all things, not for some students but for all students. Welcome to our guests. I know we have some recognitions today, which we will get to in just a little bit. If you would like to address the board regarding an non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If you would like, you can come up to the podium. Please state your name. Let us know about capacity. You are within the district. You will be allowed three minutes to say what you need to say. Because it's a non-agenda item, we will not be able to respond to it, but we certainly are listening. Ideally, we would like you to try and keep your comments again to three minutes, and if you can try and not mention any names, that would be beneficial. Anybody who wants to bring anything up that's on a non-agenda item? Yes.
Thanks.
Please step up to the podium.
Sure.
And state your name and question.
Sure. I'm Dr. Mary Kathleen Figaro, and I'm running for state senate in SD forty-seven, which is here. I am interested, of course, in education. I've been an educator while being a doctor for most of my time, and I'm wondering more about the voucher system, the vouchers that were, that were, the voucher program that was considered in the last legislative session. And I'm wondering if that is passed in the next legislative session, of course, this is only a theoretical concern, how do you think it will impact our school system? I know how it might decimate rural school systems, but how do you anticipate it having an impact in the coming year or two in the school system? And that's, that's a general question. I'm not sure if it would be part of the agenda. It didn't appear to be part of the agenda, but it concerns me as both a parent and as a potential legislator. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to make any comments? One of the board members?
I have nothing.
Spears?
Nothing, thank you.
Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Ms. Brockman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Why don't we go to Ms. Bluesmith?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Okay. I'm going to say you look last, if you don't mind. Stamen?
We'd like to draw everyone's attention to an updated personnel listing as well as an updated open enrollment listing, which is why you have a second change point to do this.
And Ms. Struce?
I have two thank yous today. I want to start with, number first one goes to Mike Zimmer, Tony Hyatt, Jill Kenyon, Kevin Pennekamp, Beth Marsun, Steph Sire. And the reason why I mention all of them, this week, we kick off on Wednesday our new teacher training. We have thirty-eight new teachers who we're welcoming to our family here in Pleasant Valley, which is very exciting, Jill being one of our new administrators for thirty-nine total new people. It'll be a four-day kickoff with all of our new teachers, which, who I mentioned, they orchestrate that and meet with them in the next four days. So, very exciting times in Pleasant Valley as we kick off the new year, and as always, with the new teacher breakfast, all of you are welcome to attend on that Wednesday morning. Just let Debbie know, but that's my first thank you. And my second thank you goes to Debbie. Just a continual, every day, there is new enrollment coming into Pleasant Valley. It's exciting that families are selecting our district and moving into our district as well. We are up quite a few students from last year, and we are trying to figure out what this all looks like for the coming year, but very exciting and good things lie ahead. That's it.
Thank you. I'll take one announcement. We have one of our students, I believe, fourth grade at Codya, Sarah Foad. She is a big runner, and this last week, she competed in the, the country for several different events, and she actually got first place in the country, the three thousand meters. So, one of our Pleasant Valley students is actually first place in the country, and the three thousand meters, she got sixth place in eight hundred meters, and she got third place in the country in fifteen hundred meters. So, congratulations to the Foad family for her accomplishments. And let's represent Ben Dorfeywa. Okay. Mr. Zimmer?
Hey. Well, tonight, it follows along that theme of not programming for one student but for all students, and not in some things but in all things. Before I turn this over to our trap club, I want to personally thank the trap coaches who volunteered to do this work, and as with all of our extracurricular activities, if it were not for the adults willing to take time out of their regular day, away from their families, to do this, these opportunities would not be possible. And so, Coach Romans, I appreciate, I'm glad, thank you very, very much for keeping this going. At this time, I'd like to turn this recommendation over to you, Coach, to recognize and introduce the members and some of the success that occurred this past season.
Please.
Come on up to the front.
My name is Mike Romans. I'm the head coach for the Pleasant Valley Trap Club, and as Mr. Zimmer said, I would be remiss if I did announce, we have sixteen core people, assistant coaches, and some key parents that help steward the team through the season, which starts in September, September first, and runs all the way through June of next year. So, that's where the season, it's a long season. Those people are key in keeping all the kids in the same place, keeping them trained, or keeping them all shepherded during practice, and just keeping things organized. So, there's sixteen key that do that, but then there's a whole host of others, parents that volunteer to score, keep, and do all kinds of stuff. So, the number's really countless when it gets right down to it. And just some demographics about our team. This year, we had a hundred and three athletes on our team. That's up eighteen percent from last year, so a significant increase. Forty-seven percent of those are from the junior high, and fifty-three percent, fifty-three percent are from the high school, and then twelve percent are female, and eighty-eight percent are male. So, we did have an increase in females this year because our numbers went up, which was good to see also because we like to have, we do let everybody compete. All hundred and three athletes can compete if they want to do that at any given point in time. So, we don't discourage that or encourage that. It's just if they want to go out and compete and have a good time, then we want everybody out there doing that. So, it's a lot of fun. Some of the accomplishments that we had this year, we had six kids or six athletes on the all-scholastic team, which is a combination of, it's a three-point, a minimum of three-point, a three-point oh GPA, and then a combination of marksmanship and community service. So, six of our athletes made it on that team, which is a, it's a national-recognized team that, they post the winners for that at our national tournament out of Marengo each year. And we had three named to all-state teams. So, Michael Lumberg, who we'll talk about here in a little bit for his accomplishments in trap, he was on the, the trap all-state team. And then we had two named to the skeet all-state team. That was Robbie Curtis and Nathan Romans, my son, which was exciting to watch. And then we had one, Oscar Olson, was named to the Iowa High Overall Team, which is a combination of their, it's a prolonged event or a prolonged award. It's their singles scores, their skeet scores, and their sporting clays scores. So, there, he was involved in numerous disciplines and was named, one of ten people named to their high overall team. We brought home ten trophies from all the regional, state, and national events that we attended. We've got a snippet of those out over in the back, back there. Couple that I want to point out, we were first in squad, or first in our varsity skeet squad for league. That was Robbie Curtis, Nathan Romans, and Michael Lumberg. And then our, our intermediates are our junior high athletes. They brought home the state singles, or they were fourth in state singles, and that's Daxlaw, Owen Young, Ben Cathan, Madison Seifert, and Sam Brockman. And most of the athletes are here behind me today. Two of them couldn't make it, but it's fun to watch. And then, some of our individual athletes who brought home individual awards. So, we go to, there's three types of award, there are three types of events that we go to. We go to regionals, which is, like it just says, it's a regional event that draws from several states here in the upper Midwest. Then we go to our state event, which is over in, it draws all of the trap teams within the state of Iowa. And then we go to nationals, which is out in Marengo, Marengo, Ohio. We also go to state skeet and state sporting clays also. But some of the individual event winners were, Oscar Olson was first in varsity singles out at regionals, and Eddie Wareman was first in JV singles and handicap. I guess, if we could, if we could have the kids stand when I call their names out, if that's all right. So, Oscar and Eddie, if you guys could stand. And then we had, the squad awards that I mentioned, we'd have Robbie's, I guess, he's working tonight, but Nathan and Michael, if you guys could stand for skeet. And then our intermediates, that was Daxlaw, Owen Young, Ben Cathan, Madison Seifert, who's not here tonight, and Sam Brockman also. So, all right. Our individual awards. So, Grant Youska and Eddie Wareman, they took the, they capped off first place in both men's and women's handicap, junior varsity handicap out at the state championship, which was a big deal. Robbie Curtis was our varsity men's league first-place winner for state skeet. He's not here with us. And then, the big event that we want to talk about is, Michael Lumberg was first out in nationals, out in Marengo, Ohio, in singles, and that's the premier event. That is the most kids participating in it. And out of twenty-five, or two thousand five hundred and eighty-six people participating, Michael didn't miss any of the targets out of two hundred, got into a shoot-off with another member, and took first place out of that. So, it's a big deal. That's all that I have. I just want to say it's been a fun year. We're looking forward to increased participation next year, most likely the way things are going within the state. There were over approximately four thousand kids shooting at different events at our state meets this year. So, it's a huge, huge event and a huge sport that's growing. So, it's fun to watch all the kids participate. So, if you have any questions for me or any of the athletes or the coaches?
Here are your notes.
Sure, of course. Yep. I can do that. Yep.
We have those also.
Sorry.
One of the comments I know as you ask questions, that just the professionalism that these athletes exhibit, it is top-notch from the moment they step foot at the range, the entire thing, and to hit two hundred straight at anything, then on top of that, follow up with the shoot-off, is just amazing because they were kind enough a couple of years ago to lend me one of the guns, and I think I nicked one out of three. I spared the other ones, but that was about it. It was just amazing. And just the safety protocol that is exhibited, and then the encouragement for each other and for other teams. Accuracy is accuracy, and it's just impressive. I just got to tell you, it's, you guys do a phenomenal job and represent Pleasant Valley, Pleasant Valley community top-notch. Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to express some, our gratitude to the board. I've been with the team eight years. Nathan's my second son that has gone through the team. He's graduating this year, so some of it's coming to an end, but I do appreciate the, the hard work that the board does to help promote us because I know it's a touchy subject in some cases, especially some years when you've got some, you know, the news isn't quite favorable toward, you know, things, guns and school-related activities. So, we do appreciate all that because we know it can be difficult at times.
Do you find that the growth that we're having on our trap team, is that kind of what you're seeing all over, or do we have larger growth here, or is it all about the same?
I think, that's a good question. I think the sport is growing. It continues to grow. Each year, the state meet gets bigger. I think it's also growing nationally too, especially in down south where the weather's warmer and you can do it more around here. But I think we're fortunate because we have a more, I want to say, it's an expensive sport, so we have enough in school districts. So, that makes the difference in how many persons it would you have. Like, Bedendorf right now only has maybe fifty if they're lucky. So, it just depends on the support that the, the school gives and, you know, the support that you can get from parents too, but I think word of mouth too, and we're as successful as we are, and the kids promote that, and the schools, it makes a big difference also.
I have a question regarding the expense. I don't know if I should come here or there. So, but when we say for one child or all, is that the fundraising that the trap team does helps make it more affordable? So, if a child might be interested, can join the team?
Yep. So, we estimate it's about a thousand dollars per athlete a year to run the team. Fifty percent of that typically comes through registration fees, and then the other fifty percent is through fundraising and activities that we do to supplement that. If anybody did have trouble meeting, you know, the, we will work out a payment plan with them, or we'll do that kind of thing also. So, we work closely with, with the school on, on those types of things, and also with the parents, and make sure that everything's done discreetly, and all the kids participate if they want to participate.
Yeah, as far as parents and coaches, I want to say thank you for what you do and the time that you give. It's great to hear that you have fifty-three percent high school and forty-seven percent junior high. I mean, that just shows that the growth is there to continue, and it's a program that has stability. So, as long as parents will continue to help coaches, we greatly appreciate that. Kids, you are phenomenal. As Mr. Zimmer said, to be able to have that much focus when you're up there and be able to hit that many, that's a great trait to have, and we're very proud of you for how you represent Pleasant Valley. Just continue to do this in the future. We're very proud of you. Well done.
We're hoping with growth that we invent the Iowa Athletic Association to help this as an official sport, and I'm going to say that the way Pleasant Valley runs, our trap shooting is not like other clubs. Financing and everything all runs through Mike and his office. They do a great job on managing the ammunition storage, all of the stuff, all of it, to show that it can be done the right way. We do it the right way, thanks to the coaches and athletes.
In the past, you've had your seniors tell us that they're going to go on and traffic the college level or the next level.
Yeah.
If they'd be willing to share.
Right now, we only have Michael and Nathan here. I'll let them, I'll let them talk, what they're going to do. We do have about, I think it was thirteen seniors that are graduating this year. A lot of them have already moved on to other things, and they're working on, you know, their next steps. But because Michael and Nathan were part of the, the top awards, they, they're joining us here. So, I'll let you guys talk about what you're doing next year, and if you plan to shoot, or what's going to go on in the future.
Well, I'm going on to Iowa State next year, major in aerospace, and hopefully minor in electrical engineering as well. I don't plan on shooting specifically for the school, but there are leagues that aren't tied to a school, high school, there's SETP, which is tied directly into high school shooting sports. But there is something called ATA, Amateur Trap Association, that I plan to shoot on the side, just because it's a bottom stretch reliever, and there's a chance to win some money.
I'm not really sure what I want to do yet, so I'm just going to scout for changes, going somewhere from there, and I'll probably still shoot hoops a little bit on the side.
The other thing I'll point out too is that through various organizations, there's a lot of scholarship money out there. So, through the ATA, and specifically their AIM branch, which is academics, integrity, and marksmanship, there were about forty thousand dollars worth of scholarships that kids were eligible for at the, at their big meet many years ago. Michael was also fortunate to get one of the bigger scholarships in the country when he won, and was about a six thousand dollar scholarship from Browning because he shoots a Browning shotgun. So, that was a big deal for him. But there's a lot of money in it too, and there's also nineteen schools right now in the state of Iowa alone that have trap, or nineteen colleges or junior colleges that have trap programs. So, there's a lot of opportunity for the kids to go on and work on the education that they want, and also get funded through the schools if they decide to do that also. So, we talk to head coaches a lot, coaching staff, when they come to the meets and stuff. So, it's a lot of fun to talk to them and introduce them to our kids and hopefully get some, some opportunities there.
Congratulations again. Great job. Anything else, Mr. Zimmer?
That's it.
Okay. We, go ahead. We're going to, we're going to go on for the rest of the meeting. If you guys do want to leave, this would be a good opportunity for you guys to do so, or you can stay and stay for the rest of the meeting. It's all up to you. Moving on, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Most from Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-five thousand forty-two dollars and thirty-one cents in payment of invoices presented. Second?
Most from Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Most from Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary, junior, high activity fund.
I move the elementary, junior, high activity funds be issued in the total amount of two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Most from Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High school activity fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of thirty-six thousand forty-three dollars and sixty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Most from Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management fund.
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents in payment of invoices presented.
Most from Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pepper fund.
I move the Pepper fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two hundred and eighty thousand eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Most from Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Anderson, that the Pepper fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal service fund.
I move that internal service fund warrants sixty-three ninety to sixty-four oh seven be issued in the total amount of ninety-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Most from Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the internal service fund warrants sixty-three ninety to sixty-four oh seven be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And trust fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in a total amount of four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Most from Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Moving on to our own business, this is twenty-twenty-three legislative priorities. We have in our packet, some of these we talked about at the last two meetings, and we have Representative Moore here today as well to kind of give us an update on this last legislative session and to inform us of things going on from a legislative standpoint. So, Mr. Struce, do you want to?
Okay, go ahead. You bet. Okay, gracias. Yes. So, on the screen right now, you see from our last three board meetings that we've had the five priority statements that we have put in for consideration for this coming year. After tonight's meeting, after we decide which ones we would like to support or forward on, Debbie will provide them to Iowa School Board Association to, as our priorities for them to look at for the rest of the school year, for upcoming legislative session. I had a chance last week to meet with Ms. Canoy or Mr. Mumpson. They came in to visit with me about these five. We talked about each one of them in particular, answered some questions. They were in support of all five of them. It says all of them are very important at this time, and so they gave that blessing there, I guess, in terms of that, those priorities. And then they also provided some names of people to contact in the future coming up in terms of where things might go in the next legislative session, who might be able to support us in these areas. So, really, tonight, we'll talk about finalizing those. As Dr. Wagley mentioned, we'll talk, have Gary Moore give us kind of an update, kind of his perspective, last legislative sessions, and then we can ask questions around our five priorities in terms of maybe your input, your thoughts of where they might go this upcoming year, and which one we should select. We do not have to put all five in. It can be three, it can be four, it can be all five. So, we've got to figure out where we want to land tonight is what we believe our priority statement is. So, with that, Gary, do you want to kind of give us an update in this last session, then we'll talk about the five and your thoughts on these five as well?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks for having me. Thank you and congratulations. I read recently where Pleasant Valley was selected as number-one school district in the state of Iowa. I'm going to assure you, I will tell everybody in the Iowa Capitol that I represent the number-one school district in the state of Iowa. I haven't looked through all of yours, maybe, and I came here to listen, so let me just give you an overview of last year, and then I want to hear your comments on the, your issues. We had a very successful year in the legislature. Now, you're hearing that from a guy that's represented you for the last six years. The last four years, I've been House Appropriations Chairman. So, a lot of my time is spent on the budget, expenditures of the state, making sure that we use our money wisely. And we created a new budget for this year, which started July one, eight point two billion dollars. We had cash on hand at the end of last year. We're in very, very, very good financial shape in the state of Iowa, which can't be said across the river with that state. So, let me stop with that. We're in great shape in Iowa. I know you've got some issues. I came here to listen, talk about your issues, and I'll be glad to try to address any of them if, if I have comments, if you have questions.
Yeah, I guess if we look at the first up there, we got pre-school funding. You know, the question there, just looking at, you know, Gary, it's always important for us to make sure that the funding is there within the thirty days as close as possible by the laws. Do you see any conversations taking place this coming year in legislation regarding school funding or what might transpire there?
Sure, and I'm heavily involved in all those discussions as appropriations chairman. Here's how it works at the state of Iowa, and it really doesn't work any different than you do at home. First of all, we got to find out how much money we're going to have next fiscal year. And the way we find out is Iowa has a revenue estimating council of three people that meet in December, March, and October. Those three people will meet in December. So, a lot of those discussions, Brian, haven't begun yet, and here's why. Those three people will meet in December and will give us a figure on what they estimate. Those three people will meet in December and will give us a figure on what they estimate revenue to the state will be next fiscal year. By law, we are required to use that estimate in December to start to build our budget for next fiscal year. So we get that number in December, and you're right, you guys, K through twelve gets the first bite of the apple. Because we try to fund your SSA within thirty days once the legislature starts. And we start generally mid-January. So the first issue, we spent a lot of time looking at enrollments, costs and so forth, and R E C estimates, how much money are we going to have? Now statewide, I mentioned we have an eight point two billion dollar budget. Three point six billion of it, excuse me if I put you to sleep, but three point six billion of it goes to K through twelve education. Roughly forty-five percent of our budget. And you're the first bite of the apple. Well, we're cognizant that we want to get that money to you as quickly as possible and let you know what that number's going to be. But remember, as appropriations chairman, I got fifty-five percent of the budget waiting. Now, we don't give them any estimates because you guys get the first bite of the apple, and that's fine, we want to do that. So there's a lot of the budget that once we give you a number, hasn't yet been determined. Then in March, I mentioned to you the R E C meets again in March. And if they raise or lower their estimate from December, we have to adjust our number as well for the rest of the budget. So a lot, there's a lot of dynamics that can change with that. If they give us a number December, we set a budget for K through twelve, and then in March, they reduce the estimate, then we've got to, we don't want to come back and cut your budgets. And we have not done that, in the last twelve years, we've been in control of the legislature. But then we have to adjust the other fifty-five percent to fit within that R E C estimate. So that may be more than what you wanted, but that's kind of how the process works. Once we get the R E C estimate in December, you bet there'll be a lot of discussion for those first thirty days.
How about flexibility with funding? Do you see that still continuing? For example, they've changed ways in which we can maybe move money from one fund to another. Do you see that continuing at your level?
Yeah, we, we would like to give more flexibility or as much flexibility as we can to the local schools. Because what's, what's good for Pleasant Valley may not be good for a voc up Iowa, where I grew up in southwest Iowa, small rural district. So we want you guys to have as much flexibility as we can give you in those things.
Questions for, if there are more on this topic? You know, as you know, this last year, the inflation has gone up and there's thought that it could continue. So what does that, how does that play a part in your decision-making in, when you meet in January? And what kind of immense will you try and help schools have so that we can kind of deal with inflation? Because costs for the school district also have gone up as well.
Again, Dr. Wogly, we deal with it just like you do at home. If your revenue goes up, you can give additional expenditures. If revenue doesn't go up, if it's proposed to go down, it doesn't matter what happens to inflation. Because if our revenue is going to go down, we can't build in a revenue enhancement. So it all depends on what the revenue estimates in December are. And inflation, while we recognize it, it's there, but we don't have the ability to, to stay up with the cost of living if our revenue's not going up.
Because then as, as a district, you know, if we have to cover our costs still, then we have to find other ways of, of generating that revenue.
Right.
Which could mean a property, a property tax levy increase.
Right.
In our district, so then you might be cutting, you know, you cut, you cut the income tax or down, but I mean, you said we're solid.
Yeah.
Financially, but then you're looking at the revenue and you're saying that if there's high inflation, we may, we potentially may not get as much. And two point five percent is not a lot considering previous years on, and then when you compound that with inflation, it becomes even more difficult. So we have to make the tough decision of maybe having to increase our levy rate.
Absolutely, that's the difficulty of managing money. And all I'm saying to you is, whatever the R E C gives us for an estimate for the revenue next year, that's the number we're required by law to build our budget around. Whether it's inflation or not, it's just, that's the number we have to use.
Is there any discussion potentially of, you know, maybe, you know, I mean, you, you gave two point five percent this last year, it's been a couple percent. In the past, it's been as high as four, it's even been as high, higher than that, but in the last several years, it hasn't really gone much above two and a half or so.
Right.
Certain districts, if they're not in a growth district like we are, we are having a hard time with that. Is there a discussion at, at your level on some of these rural districts as well that are having a difficult time even managing on two point five percent?
That's, again, we don't start those discussions, because it's, it's a moot point to have the discussions now till we know the revenue estimate. But yes, once those revenue estimates come to us, we spend a, an inordinate amount of time trying to figure out what are we going to do for SSA? Because there are growing districts like Pleasant Valley, there are small rural districts that are declining. And that's, that's the time we have those discussions, again, based on our projected revenue. That's why I don't want to simplify it, but it's just like home. It all depends on how much revenue we're going to have to spend.
Gary, this next prayer that we have is one that, there's not a lot of talk at the state level, but we always just kind of keep it on here, is just a reminder of how important early childhood is. I don't know if there'll be additional funding, but I think the big thing for us is to make sure all four-year-olds and five-year-olds have access to preschool. The more kids that we can have in a school or statewide voluntary preschool is greatly appreciated on our side. And I know the state has increased the funding over the years, so it's, you know, if they're halftime students, it could have to cost or have to funding there. We greatly appreciate that, so it's just one to keep on the radar.
Early childhood is a priority in the House Representatives, House Republicans. We passed legislation last year to increase funding for fourth grade and young fifth graders, five-year-olds for childcare. To the point where if a young five-year-old wanted to and was not ready for kindergarten, they could stay in, in childcare for another year. Unfortunately, the Senate did not agree with us and did not pass the bill, but the House did pass it. Childhood, childcare is very important to us in the House. Yes, so the answer is yes, that will come up again next legislative session, a good priority.
The next one, we look at educational opportunities, and as you read this one here, it talks about that, you know, as a district, we support various educational opportunities outside of public school. But not the loss of public school funding at the state or local level. And you think about in our district between, the open enrollment now has changed, so parents have a choice there. If you look at homeschooling, private schooling, online schooling, there's lots of options for families. You know, you and I have had multiple conversations over the last year regarding the voucher program. What that looks like. You are an advocate for not having that money leaving our state or our district, and we greatly appreciate that. Where do you see this potential conversation going this coming year? I don't see it being off the table.
Well, let me say in a global sense, our caucus believes in parental involvement in schools and school choice. Now, that's easy to say, and all, I think all of us believe in that. But you're absolutely right, the governor had proposed a voucher bill last year that I could not support. We fund, and that three point six billion I talked about to fund K through twelve schools. We fund roughly seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-four hundred dollars per student to educate from the state coffers to the local school district. Governor's proposal was to, if a kid wanted to go from a public school to a private school, five thousand of that seventy-four hundred would go to the private school. And the other twenty-four, twenty-five hundred would go to a school district that enrolls less than five hundred students somewhere in rural Iowa. Now, I got to tell you, I'm supporter of school choice, I'm supporter of parental involvement in schools. But once the legislature authorizes money to be spent to educate kids in Pleasant Valley. I just can't support sending twenty-four hundred dollars that was supposed to go to Pleasant Valley to some rural school district in southern Iowa or somewhere in a dying community. I just can't do that. And so I did not support the governor's bill. Now, that bill will come up again, you talk about what's going to happen next year, I'm sure it will arise next session. As to what happens to it, here are the factors. I don't know how many Republicans we're going to have in the House, we had sixty this year. That bill did not pass the House for the last two years, the governor's voucher bill. Did pass the Senate, didn't pass the House. So what's the bill going to look like this year? I don't know, what's the governor going to propose? That's number one. And two, how many Republicans are in the House, support school vouchers? If I know those two answers, I'll tell you whether it's going to pass or not. But I haven't seen the governor's bill for next year, she says she's going to have another one, fine. And I don't yet know the makeup after, after the election of what our caucus is going to look like. But I'm sure that will come up again next year. I don't know where I'll be on it because I don't know those factors, what the bill's going to look like.
And can you just educate us, how much money already is going to non-public schools?
Dr. Wogly, I didn't, I don't know that off the top of my head, but we have a, a number of ways that we fund non-public schools. Through textbooks, through S T Os. We do the same thing for students that go to private universities, through tuition tax credits, I don't have the total amount.
I was reading, it's over a hundred million is what I understand. That's goes, that goes to non-public.
Yeah, it could be, I don't, I don't have that number in front of me here.
So depending upon what this new bill would look like, there is a possibility that you could support a voucher system depending on what happens?
Yeah, until I see the bill, it's just like, again, it's like everything you deal with during, in your day job. The, the details are what matter. The term of school voucher by itself doesn't mean a thing to me. How's it going to work? That's what matters to me. Does it help my districts, does it help my students, or does it hamper? In the case of the governor's bill, I thought it hampered our school districts and our parents by sending money out of it, I can't support that. So until I see what the bill is, as amended, if it gets amended, I can't tell you how I'm going to vote on it tonight. If I told you, I'd be lying to you because I don't know what the bill's going to be. I'm not opposed to, my original comment was, I support parental involvement in schools, I support school choice. Having said that, there are limits to that, I've got to see what the bill is.
Questions?
The next one on mental health is one that we look at closely. You know, over the years, we've added school-based therapists to all of our buildings, although it's very difficult to sometimes find therapists who are able to work in the schools. We will have a full slate again this coming year. There's been lots of grants that are given to us through various means, like Scott County Health, D cap, D cap program gives us money for that as well. And this, this year, the legislation passed loan forgiveness for someone going into that area, which is a great feature to hopefully entice young students to go into that field. Where do you see mental health going and thoughts about how we continue to address the needs, whether it's students or adults, just?
Sure.
In our area, both in and out of school?
Mental health, whether it's for schools or not, is a priority of our caucus, will remain one next session. There's two pieces of this, and you kind of, Brian, you've talked about them. One is, it's a national problem, there aren't enough healthcare providers providing mental health counseling, psychiatry. There just aren't enough people that do that. And so part of our legislation was to create ways for people to go into those fields. To reduce their debt load or reduce their tuition, to entice them to go into it to learn. That's a long-term solution. You can't fix that overnight. And there aren't just, it's not a problem in Iowa, it's a problem in all fifty states. There aren't enough people to do that. But we did put money toward those resources to get more people into those fields. We created new psychiatric residencies at the University of Iowa. So there's a big emphasis on mental health and we're going to continue that priority. The other thing we put new money into was services for kids. We funded a lot of that through the A E As, I'm sure the A E As work with you, on direct services to children. Also for teacher training in the area of mental health. Also, we put money into the regional mental health boards. We've got a nine-county board here, Lori Elam manages that money. So we continue to increase our amount of funding for mental health, we will do so again, that will remain a priority, yes.
Questions from the board on mental health priority? Our last one?
The last one we have there really has to do with the need to, or heart and the importance of hiring new staff, finding new staff, but also retaining staff is very important to us. You know, as I look at what has transpired this past year at the legislative session, you look at the I P R S limit was raised to fifty thousand dollars to hopefully encourage someone who may want to retire to come back after a certain period of time. The practice exam was no longer needed, looking at some things for sub-licensors. I mean, all of those things are very good and they definitely help create the pool. We don't want to diminish the skill set of our teachers coming in though either. So we want high-quality teachers in all of our programs, but we believe this is a very important one to make sure we're getting high-quality staff. And staff who want to stay in our Pleasant Valley family once they're here.
Sure. I also think that's another good goal, that's one we're also very concerned about. Couple of things that you may or may not know of, that we did in this regard in the House. One, we passed a twenty million dollar extra appropriation to help increase the salaries of school staff. Parent educators, bus drivers, all, all employees of the school district. The Senate didn't pass that bill, but we wanted to commit an additional twenty million to give those people additional salary bump. The other thing, and I think this will come back again this year, which I spent a lot of time working on, I like this idea. Is if you look at the top twenty vacancy, needed careers in the state of Iowa, not by the legislature, but by Iowa workforce development, teachers are on that list. We came up with an idea in the House, which we passed, the Senate didn't, was to basically say, if you go into one of these shortage areas, let's say it's a chemistry teacher at high school. Once you get past your first two years in college to be a chemistry teacher. Starting the third year, the state will, will fund five thousand dollars, will reduce your cost five thousand dollars for year three. And the state will reduce your cost five thousand dollars year four. And after you graduate, if you stay in Iowa and teach, the next year, your first year out of college, we will reimburse you five thousand dollars for staying in Iowa and teaching high school chemistry. Now, that was a fifteen thousand dollar commitment for that student to teach chemistry, and I'm, I'm making that one up. It's also for nurses, all of the twenty top careers that we're, we have shortages in Iowa. Unfortunately, the, the same shortage as other states have as well. But that's something I think you'll see again this year, the Senate didn't pass it, we feel very strongly about that. Again, that's a longer-term solution, getting people into those professions, but that's something we intend to bring back again next year.
So the only thing that was added this year was the Teacher and Parent Educator Apprenticeship Program.
Yeah.
Which you're probably somewhat familiar with.
Yeah.
You know, as we get through that program after this first year, I'd encourage you to sit down with Mike Zimmer and have a good conversation about how that program works. There's so many entities involved, it gets very difficult, a great program. But how do we make it smoother so we're not hindering people being able to achieve in that program? I think it'd be a good, there's some learning points.
Be happy to.
From that, that we're very involved with that.
Yeah.
And Mike's done a very good job shepherding that for our district.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. Those are just some of my, I think all your goals are very on target. They're not much different than the goals we have in our caucus. But in our business, what we do, we have to get Senate concurrence and then the governor's concurrence. So as I mentioned, two or three things tonight, we did pass, but we didn't get Senate concurrence, we'll bring them back again next year.
One thing that I would just add to what Brian talked about, and I will say this too, in the finance, Iowa invested in me back in nineteen eighty-two. And that investment was Iowa taxpayers were covering about seventy percent of the tuition costs for me to send, you and I. That has continually just dropped and plummeted to the point now where it is almost for those with means, they're able to attend our region schools. Your investment in me put me here, and in turn, allowed my children to stay in Iowa and also be recipients of schooling from the regions.
Sure.
I am genuinely concerned that our investment in our human capital and our own, on that side of it, has not been placed properly. And I would just say, to take a step back and maybe ask, that investment forty years ago has been returned to this state multiple times over. Property tax, income tax, all of that. Not to become so short-sighted in what we're investing and cutting, what are we putting into and what is our return back to this state?
Sure.
I just share that as a personal story to you.
Sure.
I think the investment, I would hope, was wisely placed.
Yeah. And Mike, I absolutely agree with you. My job is to take income to the state and stretch it as far as we can. Forty years ago, and here's part of the problem, forty, fifty- Forty, fifty years ago, we didn't have a Medicare, Medicaid program. That now is the fastest-growing expense to the state of Iowa. And so dollars that we spent forty, fifty years ago on other things, we now have to, and there's nothing wrong with it. It's just that now society has determined that's a new program, we now have to fund that. Again, that's the biggest, fastest-growing piece of state government. And so, and, and also, as I mentioned to you, the K through twelve is forty-five percent of the budget. The other fifty-five percent are coming to me with the same things, and they're absolutely right. But I've got a finite amount of resources, and I haven't yet had one group say to me, you've given us too much. Don't give us quite as much, give it to somebody else. And so we have to do, again, what you do at home, we take the resources we have, try to fund the priorities of Iowans as we read them. And we'll continue to do that, but I understand your point. I, I'm in the same situation, the state of Iowa invested in me, so.
You could mention there is a couple, like two or three things that the House had passed, but then the Senate didn't pass. Do you have a good idea now what, how you need to change those or improve it to get it to pass in chambers or?
No, it's hard for me, as even in my role as appropriations chair, to determine my own caucus. I wouldn't dare guess how to do it with the Senate. We communicate with the Senate, I have a counterpart in the Senate, and we have conversations. But they have different values, they have different members, they have, uh one senator is twice the districts that of, that I represent. Um so they play by their own tune, just like we do, and it's the way the system's set up. We will continue to have those discussions and try to get them to accept some of these things, we're willing to tweak them. But I'm just, as I mentioned to you, as we, and I don't know how many, I've talked about two or three tonight, we couldn't get agreement with the Senate on it. I don't know if we can again next year, but we're going to continue to fund what we think's the priorities in the House.
Before we move on, I, I.
I have one question.
Yes.
So on this last topic of educational and establishment, you rightly mentioned that, you know, across the state, there's, across the country, there's a large amount um teachers that are either leaving the profession. So Iowa already kinda has a difficult time to recruit. I think a lot of the ideas that you've mentioned, to try and help from a financial standpoint, certainly can be helpful, that will really help. Because we have to basically step up our game if we wanna try and recruit um and
Recruit.
and retain the brightest and the best.
Yeah.
Which is what's made our, our, um, our school system so successful. Um I've had conversations with a lot of teachers as well, and, and there's been some thought, and I know you've heard this before in the legislative session, that there has been some rhetoric, at least at the state level, um that Iowa isn't very supportive, the, 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 the state legislature isn't very supportive of teachers, at least they're, they're kind of being scrutinized a lot more. You had one in the other chamber that sort of mentioned a sinister agenda. And so some of them are feeling very um, um, you know, they're taken aback by some of these comments. And so as much as we wanna try and help them financially, there's also some thought that in the state of Iowa there might not be as much support for public teachers compared to other states.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion at the state level on these types of comments and what can be done?
Yes.
To try and change that rhetoric from the state level?
Sure.
So that our teachers here feel supported by the state.
Absolutely, and I would tell our teachers, and I've told a number of those people who've made those negative comments, that's totally out of line. That's totally inappropriate. Although I can't stop a senator from making a stupid comment, I can't stop my own House members. But I've had conversations with our House members, you haven't heard those come from us. Uh they come from other individuals, I've had a conversation with that individual, um I don't know if it'll stop him or not. But I can't stop people from, in society, from saying what I consider stupid things. Teachers are very critical to us. Um but let me go back to when we talked about uh number five. It's not just teachers. I don't understand where everybody went. John Deere can't hire people, Arconic can't hire enough people. There's, there's eighty thousand jobs vacant in the state of Iowa. And forty thousand people on unemployment. Where did everybody go? There's a shortage of teachers, and we need good teachers, but there's a shortage all over, and it's not just in Iowa. And I'm willing to work on that, um uh I don't know what the answer is to it. But we have to take those things that are important in society, and whether it's teachers or chemists or whatever, and try to encourage people to stay in those fields or go into those fields. Uh but there's a shortage everywhere. And I do not condone those comments that are made by people in Iowa or outside of Iowa that belittle teachers. Education was my profession. I have a son in education as well. I don't understand why people feel they have to say those things, because it's too critical for all of us.
And I know actually earlier in the, in the session, you had mentioned, you know, there was some, there was a lot of talk about certain bills that were introduced that, of course, didn't even make it to committee. And you said that whenever a bill gets introduced, you know, you shouldn't, you shouldn't react to it right away.
Right.
But I do think that, you know, if there's a limitation to some of these bills, that potentially could also cause a negative um effect on our district and for people in this area, or people in the state, those, it needs to be scrutinized even more.
Sure.
An introduction, and even though it doesn't come into committee, can still give the wrong message.
Yeah, oh absolutely.
Doesn't help at all.
I, I'm just saying, a lot of those comments that were negative
Yeah.
Didn't go, it, they didn't go anywhere other than out into the public, which is not good.
Yeah.
In fact, number two, that early childhood, um, that one, I don't think even got out of our committee. Um A lot of bills don't, don't get out of committees. Um so frankly, I can't spend a lot of time worrying about everything, because most of them, those negative comments, I don't like to hear them. They're not good for the benefit of society, but they're not gonna go anywhere, just like this session, I don't think any of those, whether it was library books or a lot of that stuff, didn't materialize, other than the negative rhetoric, which is not helpful.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, I know you have lots of voices you have to listen to. But from my seat, I can't thank you enough for what you do for Pleasant Valley and our district. You're always willing to text or call with a question, you're always willing to listen, or you ask for advice at times. Um we know you listen to us, we really appreciate that and the stance you take, uh again, appreciate all that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you all.
Okay, um so we, we kind of have talked about these priorities, we now have heard um from Representative Moore um regarding each of these. Uh so we have to decide um if this, if this five priorities are what we wanna send, um or if we wanna take something out. We'll keep the five as they are, and then also um to appoint a representative to the delegate, which I know that Mr. Camerier's not here, but he was interested in, in um going to it.
So we can just point him when he's not here, right?
He did email me, and he said he would go, so I, I did get his approval. Molly, Molly would go, could go as well, but um she, she was there last year, so if we try and have somebody else go, um it'll give them an experience as well. So for the first question is, are people okay with these five priorities? I think they all are very important, and uh again, this is just what we're presenting to them, and then the, the delegate assembly will ultimately decide what the priorities are, but these are kind of the five that we um have highlighted. And um I think it's perfectly appropriate to send to um delegate session.
I like the five, we've talked about these five for the last couple of meetings, and I feel that all, each one of them has um information that needs to be addressed and, and we need to utilize or send all five of them to.
Anybody think differently? Okay, then I guess we will, we will have these five, and everybody okay with um uh Doug Camerier being our representative? Then if that's the case, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the IS, IASB Legislative Action Priorities as presented and appoint Doug Camerier to act as our representative to the delegate assembly.
Second?
Well, my Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the IASB Legislative Action Priorities as, as presented and appoint Doug Camerier to act as our representative to the delegate assembly. Vol call, please, Mr. Ayers?
Mrs. Kunkel?
Um, yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, um going back to new business, uh PVHS Spartan Stadium and PVA Butler Junior High Track project. Uh and that, Mr. Struce?
Yes. So Deanne Kramer's not able to be with us tonight, but Daniel Scholberger uh is with us here tonight from Shive Hattery. And this is just the first phase of what we're looking at in terms of, we talked about it before in our five-year planning, about the junior high and the high school track. Um he'll explain kind of schematic design, kind of the process and the timeline we're looking at. But just as project, as a quick overview before Daniel talks about it, it would be a, um a new surface put down on our track, a five-eighth-inch surface. Um we'll change the color of the track, we'll stripe it, and then it'll be a new carpet on the football field as well, with a new logo um added to that, and then the junior high would just be a, a spray coating, just to put a little more life to it, and then our, our restriping of that as well, so. He'll go through the timelines here at this time, kind of walk through any questions you have, so we can keep this process moving um as we move into next summer, because once May hits, we'll be rolling to get this ready for football season a year from now in the the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so, Daniel, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um yeah, so the project uh is uh, Mr. Struce had mentioned, um I won't go back through that again. Uh what we'll initially do is, um if approved tonight, we'll get started, uh we'll do some survey work on uh the high school field, uh and also junior high field, to make sure we have everything uh that we need from that standpoint. There's some issues on some areas on the track that we need to address as far as uh, uh some areas that need to be repaired. And so we'll take care of that, we'll take a look at those two and get that rolling. Um so that'll happen um probably this week, beginning of next week, um we'll start the design phase after that. Um and that'll probably, we'll have some meetings with the school uh to make sure that we have the track colors and, and the logos and all that correct, as far as what needs to go on there. Uh and at that point, then we'll start our design as far as what needs to happen there. Uh that'll start sometime beginning of September, and then carry on through uh from that standpoint into uh October. Uh around the tenth, we're thinking we'll have um the information to present to the board. Uh we may have some meetings in between there, if, if that is deemed necessary, to come meet with the board and let you know where we're at with the project. Um but then, uh we have this thing ready to bid um in November. Um so we'll give the contractor two and a half to three weeks to bid it. Uh open bids in November, sometime in that November ninth range, somewhere in that neighborhood. Uh to be able to take those, uh board can consider those uh after that bid, and then get a contractor on board uh for construction again next year. Um the timeframe we have, uh we're looking at in the contract itself, for the contractor uh would be uh beginning no later than May fifteenth and finishing up by July twenty-second of twenty twenty-three.
Reason we reached, we reached out to Shive Hattery, they're the ones who did the project initially the first time, and we're very pleased with how it turned out, so. I mean, they know the project without it help us moving forward, and expedite the process and, and have it completed in time.
Questions from the board?
Um so, May fifteenth, track season and soccer season would still be going on, so how would that?
So we'll work with, through that with Deanne Kramer, and what that looks like and where we end up playing, or if there's any overlap, what we have to do there. But a lot of it could be site design work as well, so we'll work through all that.
Like it's still finished off their season before they actually start.
Deanne will be very involved in all of those lines.
Questions? Obviously because of the fact that this is, there's a small window, and you can do this, and you know, there's always supply chain issues, how you, how would you guys handle that? Because we're bidding it so early, you'll just order everything in much earlier than it may be?
Well, we're hoping that, you know, with the supply chain stuff, based on what we've been hearing, there's not an issue with supply chain uh from the standpoint of the track surfacing and from the standpoint of the, of the field turf, but I can say that now. We don't know what's gonna happen come, you know, come midtime, so, or, or come next construction season, but that's, that's where it is right now, so I mean, that's we're hopeful that that's gonna stay that way, so.
Questions? Mike? Funding-wise, is this coming, is this part of our five-year capital?
Yes, it is part of our five-year capital projects, William.
And um do you know how much we have budgeted for this? Is this, is this, is this?
Still one point five?
One point five million.
Okay.
And initially, with our first conversations, we thought we'd be in that window, that we're expecting, so hopefully, it'll all continue to be that way.
Okay. Any other questions at all? Um if not, then I will take a motion.
I move the board approve this schematic and design development process for Pleasant Valley Spartan Stadium and Pleasant Valley Track Project.
Well, it's been by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the board approve the schematic and design development process for Pleasant Valley Spartan Stadium and Pleasant Valley uh track projects. Vol call, please, Ms. Damon?
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to
Thank you, Damon.
Thank you. Moving on to our next um item, it's insurance uh update, and um Mr. King Smith? Would you like to um
Yeah, I can.
take this, and
I can.
We did, we have a bunch of insurance uh today.
Yeah, yeah, um we have with us tonight Tate Featherstone, he is the district's insurance um official title consultant, or With Arthur J. Gallagher, Risk Management Services. Um Tate also is a parent in the district, has several kids in the district.
Several.
Uh anyway, it's been a while since Tate's been here, but um we thought it'd be good to bring him here tonight uh to update us on the coverages that the district has, as far as property liability, workers' comp insurance, those kind of things. Also, we did make a couple of changes this year, which are a little more significant than um some of the changes that we've made in past years, so again, we thought it'd be good for Tate to come and just kind of update the board on the changes that were made, and say what, just a kind of a summary of our coverages that we have in the district.
All right.
And turn it over to Tate.
So Tate Featherstone, I've been here a few times, I don't know all the protocols, so I came with flyers for everybody else who seems to have them here, but uh uh ask questions, I, I was gonna try and keep it at, you know, thirty thousand square foot, or, you know, foot level, so that, you know, everybody's not, you know, bored. But I'm happy to get into the weeds as much as possible, I just wanted to kind of get what I felt like, maybe you guys would think was, was important here. Uh we are with uh EMC, they do probably ninety-six percent of uh schools uh in the state of Iowa. Uh that doesn't mean that we don't frequently go out to get competitive bids outside, there's really only one viable option. It's actually a Gallagher-controlled program, uh it just doesn't make sense for us financially. Uh if we had the buses, uh it might be different, but where we currently sit, and that's where they make a lot of their, a lot of the benefits of that other program with the buses. Uh and so I'm sure when you guys re-up your busing, uh there's been a lot of turmoil within that, you turn on the news and something's happening with the bus, and people aren't super excited about it from an insurance standpoint, and you mentioned inflation. That's the first time like ever that cars are worth more now than they were, you know, the day before, so. Um just kind of a, a weird deal there, so anyway, and we did get a quote there uh for the actual package, uh and it was um considerably higher that way, so we felt pretty good about where we are. Uh one thing I will say, as uh as a elite school district, um it doesn't go unnoticed when we're marketing your program, we, I do about fifty-two different school districts. Um I have a lot more leverage with Pleasant Valley uh than a lot of, than a lot of the other districts that I have. Uh it's because of the great leadership, it, it's well thought of in the, in the, in the, in the community, in the states. I mean, people know Pleasant Valley, nobody wants to lose Pleasant Valley because that looks bad. Uh and so that's kind of an important, I, I think it's just, it's good for you guys to know uh how you're thought of, not just in the scholastic area, but also in the insurance world, is that this is considered premier district, it is, uh and you're rated as such. Um so going kind of, just walking real quick, property, obviously, see the values, uh those, those jumped up a little bit on us, we've been kind of we've been, we have a good spread of risk, the chance of all of our buildings going down in one swoop are, are pretty minor, and it's still rated as such. Uh but they, they kind of caught us a little bit on that, so uh we got a little pop there, so we did, one of the things we looked at this year uh is, schools are getting hit, I, I mean, the weather patterns are changing, um right, wrong, indifferent. Um costs are through the roof, literally and figuratively, uh for, you know, repairs, those types of things, so. Um we looked at, what, what, what's happening is, is that deductibles haven't changed, we've had five-thousand-dollar deductible, I looked back to two thousand ten. Same deductible since two thousand ten, and so we did, we have been looking year after year, and there wasn't a lot of savings. This year, they were incentivizing people to move, and so one of the decisions that we, we made, and we can always go back if we think this is a bad idea. Uh but we, we switched from a five-thousand deductible to twenty-five thousand. Uh it was a forty-seven-thousand-dollar savings, significant savings uh to do so, so we thought, well, with, I mean, as long as we don't have two sizable claims, we're in pretty good shape, we've had one claim, I think it was a tornado out at the junior high. We've had one claim, I think it was a tornado out at the junior high, um, and uh, back in like twenty-seventeen or something. So it seemed to be a good decision, knock on wood. Um, but again, we can always change that. Um, and so obviously logical, why didn't we do that a year earlier? Well, a year earlier, there was no incentive to do so, having a eight, an eight thousand dollar reduction for taking on an extra twenty. Um, we usually try and say it, it's like, has to be one and a half, usually is where the numbers make sense for us. Um, but anyway, so that can always be changed, but that is something that we did, we did do, we thought it was a good decision. Work comp, this is probably the biggest change, uh, we changed our work comp carry that we've had since twenty-thirteen, uh, Unite Heartland, uh, their Blue Cross Blue Shield company. Um, COVID hit them hard, uh, they changed a lot of workflows, uh, made it um, it it just, it it became where it was, it was like a family. Uh, they were part of our team, and they became less part of our team, and that became a concern, uh, therefore we went out and found a new team. Uh, they saved us some money, uh, in addition to, they put a thirty-nine percent dividend on our policy. So if we have no claims, we will get thirty-nine percent of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Uh, so again, there's grants uh, for safety practices, which we're, we're starting the process of getting into, and so uh, we've got a pretty good, pretty good gig there. Um, if, one, one point of contention here is that the price for this is the same as we were in twenty-fifteen, yet we have seven million more in payroll. So I think we're sitting pretty good there, so. Again, that's kudos to the staff that you guys have hired. Uh, this is the one that probably, when we talk to school boards, is probably the most, one that gets asked the most questions, school board legal, liability, educators' liability. Um, obviously, general liability, if something gets broke uh, or damaged, uh, or somebody gets hurt. Uh, this is for you caused me financial, mental, whatever, pain, uh, as a result of the decisions that you made. Uh, you can see the limits, we have the highest limits available uh, via EMC. Uh, there was one change, EMC has been hit hard with this, with a a variety of things. Uh, a lot of the decisions that you guys have had to talk through probably over the last two, three years. Uh, some of those are still popping, and so they're, they're taking necessary protocols to protect themselves. And so they've, they've lowered their excess uh, from fifteen million to ten million, that's for the group of all schools. Uh, and so that didn't go unnoticed uh, by us, and so that's one of the reasons we went out and looked at some of the other options to see. Uh, what can, what else can we get if we need it? This covers past, present, and future, so whatever our number is at this current time, or, you know, ten years from now, when you get, maybe some of you aren't on the board anymore. Uh, you'll still have the protection of this if they go back to, I I just had one filed from nineteen-seventy-seven. Uh, and so, you know, it was, it is what it is, those things can happen, and so that's why we want you to make sure that you know that you're, you're serving, uh, you're not paid super well for it. Uh, it is, you know, it's great that we love that you guys do this, um, but uh, it's just one of those things, we want to make sure that you know that you're protected, because we value what you guys are doing for us. You guys are doing a great job, and so, spending your time. Any questions on that piece? Insurance is really exciting, so. Okay, uh, then cyber is the other big one that that we get a lot of questions on, uh, without having buses, uh, this is probably the next piece. Uh, we are, um, so we actually do a lot of analytics on these types of things. This is something we've just kind of tried to 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 stair-step up a little bit to make sure that we're adequately uh, priced. We are in the seventy-fifth percentile uh, of districts, uh, that's across the country. Uh, we've seen crazy claims, you know, in Miami and some of those types of places, uh, but I feel very adequate with the the limits that we have uh, for the current uh, industry. And just, again, with with budgetary, we're trying to be smart, how would I spend my money that was my money? What do we want to do, and that's kind of how we look at this process, is how would, what's, what's, how do we get the most bang for a buck? There's only so much, kind of like, what, um, what more Gary said, you know, it was just one of those things that it's, it's, you have this much, and where do we spend it the smartest? And we thought this is something that's been near and dear to us, and there's a lot of changes in this industry, and uh, this is my number one uh, claim that I see, is cyber liability these days. Um, it's not fires, it's not, it's not even accidents, it's just, it's cyber. So, uh, we want to make sure we're protected, we feel that number's pretty good. Um, any questions?
I would just say, you know, what Tate's mentioning right now about cybersecurity, that's one we are watching very closely, when it started coming to the forefront, we called him right away. He's very responsive about what do we do, there, this is a rabbit hole you could spend a lot of money in very, very quickly, um, we know that. I think if you keep watching the news across the state of Iowa, you know, earlier in the year Cedar Rapids was hit very hard with this, just learned the other day that Linmar was hit very hard with this. Um, so it's real, and the cost is there, so you hope the three million dollar takes care of it, but it's also all the other things, it just shuts you down for a number of days, so you can't do anything. So, we'll keep working with him very closely, and Kevin's aware, and we have a big presentation to our staff about this as well coming up when we start school, he'll go around every building.
Several months ago, we talked about this, about educating the staff, and that there was a test email sent, and several people clicked on it. Is that up to us to continue to find ways to continue to educate our staff, or is that something Tate can continue to help us do with a supplemental program? For example, at my job, every month I have to take a cybersecurity class, it's a ten-minute class that I have to click through and take, and yes, it's a pain. But it educates me to the point, I had a friend who is in IT, texted me like a voice text, and it was really erratic, because you know how voice texting goes. I called her the next day and I said, were you really trying to get a hold of me? Because your message makes no sense, and she goes, yeah, it was a test to see if you were, you know, going to answer me to not get hacked. Because that's her life, right? My point is, it happens, you can click on the right or the wrong thing. And I'm hyper vigilant because I take all these classes. You shared with us once before that our staff was not so in tune.
Yeah, so that's what set up this whole training we'll have coming up here, that we're, uh, Mr. Pennekamp, go to every single school and talk to every single staff member about it. Show them what they should be watching for and and just be vigilant on that part of it. Um, we're also working with the AEA, uh, with their tech department, the things that we can be watching for, so we'll also start the um, I forget the name of it, but the authentic authorization.
Multi-factor.
Thank you, that is the word, um, we'll have that in place coming up here effective September, most people have started, I think September first it goes into action.
And then even for the kiddos on the Chromebooks, they'll have multi-factor?
Yes.
They went on a school computer.
Yeah, it's important, and we do have, we've got a a pretty robust, I mean, cyber program, it doesn't do, I mean, we're not, um, we're not a a cyber team, uh, per se. But we do have a lot of manuals, a lot of those types of things, we have trainings, small little trainings, uh, those types of things. But really, it comes down to, and I always try and over communicate some of this stuff whenever we see them, and uh, Brian and Mike are probably just, hey, this was. Your wife is, it's always around holidays, uh, it's around, um, it's a, it's just anytime someone's wanting to change, you know, you're talking about projects here, right? Somebody probably knows that you're working with Shive Hattery, and you could get a bill from a fake Shive Hattery. Yeah, I I mean, it's just those little things, and and having you guys being able to check and balance, uh, you know, what you, what you do at these meetings, hopefully you catch them. But, I mean, reality is, is as long as there's people using stuff, mistakes are gonna be made, unfortunately, so.
Tate, on your last bullet, you had listed theories of crime, auto liability, I was just looking for my little project.
Yeah, that's all under our, that's all, that's, gosh, I just, don't, don't remind me. Uh, no, it's a great project, it's a great project, it's not from an insurance standpoint. Um, it's not, usually when you start talking airplanes, people don't get too excited from an insurance standpoint, it's excluded in a lot of policies, but that's under our general liability. So, um, it's projects completed that we're done.
Do you have any, kind of to to uh, to this point, uh, like for being a physician, we have malpractice insurance. And so if you do a certain amount of uh, either course online, or you go to a seminar, then you get like a ten or fifteen percent discount on your malpractice premium. Do you guys have things like that with the stuff that we have covered here with the district?
Um, s- a little bit, so we have a little of that with work comp, uh, where you can get some of that, but with cyber, it's basically do this if you want coverage. Here, I mean, it, it's just non-negotiable, every, we just were talking with some cyber people, and they just said that we're just upside down uh, right now. And that'll get fixed, it'll get to a point where we don't even need it anymore because we have everything covered. Um, but there isn't a lot of that, EMC, it's a sa- you're part of a safety group, uh, there is a dividend if the whole group performs. They have not performed for, I think, three or four years, where it's, I mean, E- EMC is at a point where, uh, it it's gonna be interesting over the next few years. Uh, where they're paying out a hundred and forty-six dollars for every dollar they take in uh, on their insurance program. Uh, and that's why they're trying to get people to push their deductibles up, and so there are savings for that, so that those smaller claims, uh, it's, that's not a good, that's not a lo- good long-term example. But again, if they do have the safety group, if the group comes back, y- you know, in the past, we've gotten fifteen, seventeen, twenty thousand dollars uh, for the group. But it hasn't been related to the training, uh, like the malpractice does, which is a little slicker, or accountants, um, so.
And then, um, you like, I I know, like, when we go through our um, bills and we look at what we approve, we do see these, in two thousand dollar insurance deductibles that come up.
Yep.
Every once in a while.
Yep.
You analyze it and say, well, you know, it might be better for you to, because you have these many in a year or in two years, that we should reduce your deductible a little bit. I know you'll have to pay more in premium, but do you do that analysis?
Yeah, we do that every year, and that's actually how we came up with the the large credit this year for the property. Um, the liability, uh, we can't get that lower for the.
Unless you get two thousand?
Well, yeah, especially with, over the past couple, um, we, that's been the one area where we've had a little bit of of hiccup as of late. And that's just, that's the area where where EMC is losing the most, it's just, there's a lot going on, uh, a lot of, um, uh, I'm trying to think the right way to put this, accountability. Processes, uh, and just things, that's just a, that's an interesting world right now, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a dangerous one, and I would love to have that lower, uh, if I could. I would love to.
Can't go towards education, no, it goes for deductible.
We're not paying, we're not paying much of, I mean, we're not paying very much for that coverage, uh, so there's no savings to take it up. Uh, and I tried to get it lower, and they said, uh, no, thank you. Especially, you know, if we have a couple of years in a row, maybe they'll, they'll maneuver that back, but that's been, that's kind of a no-go, we're seeing a lot of those go up. So.
Um, as far as work, how many claims do we historically have, are we pretty good there?
Um, oh boy, I mean, that varies by year.
Yeah, fluctuates from year to year.
It it can fluctuate, I mean, we've seen checks where we've gotten checks for thirty-five thousand bucks back. Um, on that, and then we've also had years where we've got nothing, this year is the year we're, we're tracking to get one. We currently have a a twenty-nine percent dividend on our policy, uh, and right now, we're tracking to hit about twenty-five percent. But again, that, it, you just no- don't know, but that's paid eighteen months after the policy is over, and the reason is that someone could have been hurt that we didn't know was hurt, and then the claim gets larger. And so it's not just a drop dead, because once that money's gone, it isn't coming back for the insurance company, so that's their protection, if you will. But, but Lori, Lori does an unbelievable job of managing it, and that's one of the reasons that that we're actually making the change, is they took some ability to um, watch a lot of the claims and make sure that we're doing that away from her. And so we, we proactively found a company that would give her more of that access, I mean, she's in there every day, um, you know, managing a lot of these things. And I I think that without, I I I firmly believe that Lori is the reason that our mod is as good as it is. And we have a point seven eight mod, which means uh, average is one point oh for all the schools, is one point oh, uh, we're at point seven eight. Um, and so that means we're getting a twenty-two percent credit just because we've been good before we get all the credits. And we have the absolute maximum credit you can get on your policy, that's what what uh, SFM gave us, so.
And they look at the last three years, right, and they send you.
Uh, no, they look at the three of the last four, not the most recent, so. Um, we are exceptional when it comes to that, and and the guy called and was furious uh, that we left, and I just said, it's, you guys dropped the ball, and and you made the one person you couldn't make mad, mad. And, uh, you know, and so, uh, it 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 just is what it is. And so she's now has a one, a a much better workflow, which I think is is almost as important as as the savings. I mean, savings obviously are important, but we want to make sure we have the best workflow to get our teachers back to school, uh, proactive uh, risk control, which which comes with a grant, uh, which we're, again, we're, we're working through now that we may get uh, in December. It's not huge, but it's, it's, it's better than zero.
See Lori, thank her because she's even on vacation, and she found something, and she's on the company right away saying, this should not be this way, what's going on, so she's all over it.
Is there any um, uh, types of insurance that, besides, you know, we have a cyber now, um, but is there any type of insurance that you see that is um, being, that that is being adopted by several school systems that we haven't done yet? Or do we, are we, are we pretty good with?
I would say we're probably more cutting edge, um, and cyber was the first, was one, I was on that a long time before, we, we had that before anybody had it. And uh, so I was kind of, that's one of my things, is I just, I think you can see the world and what's happening, and that's, that's important. Uh, but there, there's nothing, I mean, we have pollution, we have crime, uh, we've got the coverages in place, I mean, airplanes. Um, and so we've got what we need, I feel very good about where we are. Uh, the deductible made me a little nervous, but the savings was just too pa- too good to pass up, uh, I'd like to see that a little lower. Um, but again, that's just something every year we're gonna just review, and we review all those things every year, we have to look at that stuff and and bring options, or uh, you become obsolete.
Tate understood the, the Wogly's question, is there anything that you would like to see from a school safety and security related to liability? That we go over the list with deputy, uh, and on, check everything on a security standpoint to try and mitigate the best we can, but we're a public entity, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 you can't, as long as we're dealing with people, I mean, it's, it's crazy, the things I see, I I sometimes get called negative by Catherine's husband. Uh, but I see a bunch of weird, crazy things that happen, and it's just, you you just, you just hope that that's what it is, that it isn't something that we could have seen that that was gonna happen. And and I, I don't, you know, again, whenever I see something school-wise, I always bring it up, and I always try and get it out to to the mics and the Lories, not all, not as often you. But just to make sure that, hey, here's something going on, um, but without having the buses, the buses is is huge. And I know that that's, I don't know if that's ever a talking point in the future, but that's, um, we, there, there's a lot more that needs to go into the bus side. Um, and and again, I know we don't have that yet, uh, maybe you will at some point, I don't know, um, but again, those, the buses is, is a challenge for us. And we don't have that, so, and and then also the driving, you know, just, that's, that's been something that's been a big topic of conversation, coaches driving, not having bus drivers, uh, those types of things. And we can just do what we can do, we were talking about jumping Joey's the other day, and it's just, we can ask, and and hopefully it comes through, and if it doesn't, our, our, my goal is to protect PB. And and as long as you guys are good, if the PTA doesn't have the right coverage, we can't, I mean, I want them to, we we can help them, but we're trying to protect, you know, the school district.
Don't we still have some earthquake coverage?
We have earthquake, yeah, but that's, I mean, that costs forty dollars a year, so, it's just.
Any other questions? If not, uh, I will take a motion on the insurance update. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, guys.
I move the board approve that twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three insurance coverages and changes report as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, I think Mr. Ears with the board approve twenty-two, twenty-three insurance coverages and changes, and changes report as presented, roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Kunkel.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Dr. Wogly.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
And now, Mr. Zimmer, you're gonna talk about the transition alliance program, um, and the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and how it went this last year?
Yes, um, so, not knowing, first of all, the transition alliance uh, program is for our students with disabilities, and it extends our support to them up to age twenty-five. This is a big deal, so securing a job, holding a job, providing uh, transportation, attempting to address any barriers that might be preventing our students from taking that next step in society. Is the whole purpose of this program, so it really is taking what I think we have a, an excellent um, student services program and and taking it one step further. And the way this works is, it's a way for Iowa Voc Rehab to also extend their services as the type finances, and a way to address and partner with school districts. So what happens is, is that Iowa Voc Rehab pays for fifty percent of any of the services that are incurred by us to offer this. Now, as you can guess, almost all of it is salary-related, so this is paying for half of the TAP coordinator position. It's paying for half of the job coach position that we had hoped to have in place last year, but, I mean, and you've heard this expressed over and over again, we didn't have anybody available. So this year, we do have a full-time job coach that's helping with that, and then uh, it also covers conference fees that they go to for training, supplies. Um, and it also will cover mileage that is incurred, half of the mileage that's incurred getting students to and fro, and it also covers over the summer the support. So, one of the things that I will just say, that we've oscillated back and forth with uh, this handicap accessible van, that was a very big, big deal. And so, after some further reflection on that. And so after some further reflection on that particular purchase, we decided that as a district, we would purchase the van. We wrote an SCRA grant for that for the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, and we were chipping a little bit, couple extra thousand dollars because we just could not get a van. Couldn't get, there wasn't anything available. And so now we're on the market and we've got one in, we at least got bids, you approved those, uh, I think a couple board meetings ago. And the reason we did that is we're gonna own the van and then we will, so to speak, charge Voc. Rehab for the miles that we use. And then if we're not using it, it's still ours and we can do with it. We, we gained a lot more flexibility with that. So that was one of those, uh, rationale for that decision. The budget goes from October first to September thirtieth. That's the fiscal year for the TAP budget. And so what you have in front of you is Iowa Voc. Rehab wants to get our budget in front of them. Asking for your, uh, you know, blessing as you looked at that. I sat down with, uh, Joe Kenyon, who happens to be at the TAP training in Ankeny at the, um, D-Mac FFA building right now. They were there today and they're with, uh, Melissa Beaver-Dockery, who is a coordinator, and Stephanie Hammett, who is a full-time job coach. The three of them are out there going through, um, the protocol, the process. And then tomorrow, they're, uh, have an opportunity to share ideas with what other TAP programs in the state have eye on what they're doing. And so that's a good thing, that's why she's not here to report on it, she will in detail next time. That's, that's a quick summary of where we're at with that.
Questions? Mr. Zimmer? If not, then I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the transition alliance program budget as presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Hostess, I think, and Ms. Anderson. Let the board approve the transition alliance program budget as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Dr. Wogly.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
And then the last item on the agenda is Pleasant Valley Community School District and Eastern Iowa Community College, Scott Community College Parking Lot Memorandum of Understanding. Um, Mr. Strus, this obviously deals with the high school and the parking there.
That's correct. You know, first of all, I was, wanna say thank you to Eastern Iowa Community College, Scott Community College for their partnership with us here over the last number of weeks and trying to get this to work out in a way that's, we feel is acceptable for all involved. Um, as you know, a few board meetings ago, um, that was actually the first one in June, I believe, we had made the comment then that we were looking at parking lot concerns moving forward. We know they're there. We have future plans to expand our baseball softball, we can take about sixty parking spots there. You know, in the future, we can always expand the parking lot that is up here. We were very hesitant to do that because of all the concerns we've had with the parking lot there the last year, year and a half. But the gates that we have put in have really minimized that this year, this summer is much better. Last year, we had hired a deputy FAW to sit in the parking lot on weekends to help us ma- monitor those 'cause it's just so much parking space. People like to spend time in our parking lots on the weekends. Um, so the parking, the gates have really minimized that, which is, yeah, very appreciative of that side of it. Just so you have it in perspective, um, as we continue to grow from an enrollment standpoint, we currently have seven hundred and seventy-one parking spots for high school students. Last year and looking at this coming year, we anticipate right now we have seven hundred and ninety-two requests for sophomore juniors and seniors. So we were over twenty-one spots in our current lots that we have available. Now, you have to take a step back and think, well, goodness, you're twenty-one over, but you always have to remember that not all kids are in school every single day either. So you build in around fifty extra spots every single day. So it is a very tight parameter of where we were going to be with that. Obviously, when you make a statement that we are going to limit juniors and seniors being able to drive and sophomores being put on a lottery system for the sports season they are in, that brings forth concerns. And one legitimate concern is neighborhoods, you know, kids will still drive to school but park in a neighborhood and walk. If you go on Quail Ridge, that is why we have signs up that say two-hour parking, not between X amount of time the city worked with those neighborhoods. We have the one over by, I'll call it Sparrow Court Belmont Meadows. Um, that was a concern that was brought forth, if we don't have enough parking spots, people will park there. What does that look like? Um, so that was a concern we brought forth. And at that time, you know, we had been, as I mentioned, we've had this in the works with EICC and Scott, Scott Community College, but we didn't wanna mention any of this because if it doesn't work out, then you come forward and say, well, you know, here's a great plan, but it's can't work. So what you see before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding that Scott Community College feels very comfortable with. I feel comfortable with it because when we were going back and forth and trying to come to determination, my last response was I was willing to give them money, provided it was going to help students at Scott Community College. So what you see in this foundation is that we would give money to their foundation, um, in the tune of fifteen thousand dollars for one year to lease their B parking lot, which is right up over here for a hundred spots. You know, the grand scheme of things, what it costs to build a.
Hundred fifty spots, right?
Hundred and fifty spots, yes, hundred and fifty spots for fifteen thousand. In the grand scheme of things, what it costs to build a parking lot, as you know, that is very, very expensive. Um, so you see in the memorandum of understanding what the expectation is. If we go with those one hundred and fifty parking spots, we identify them with them so we know where they are. We communicate to our kids where they can park. This would basically be a lot for sophomore students to park. Sophomores can also park in the softball, baseball lot, um, so that is an option. We will maintain the parking lot, so when we plow our lot, we will plow that lot. Um, we will look into, from a monitoring standpoint, deputy FAW, as he does his routes around ours, he will also do the route around that school, making sure our kids are parking there legally, doing what they should be doing. We'll also look at putting a camera or two on a light pole to monitor that. Um, we believe, because we already tied into their system, 'cause we used to have the network on the tower, we can maybe still monitor those from his office, so he can see the parking lot from his office. Um, and we can monitor if something were to happen, pull a camera back up. If there's an accident, we can go down that path and try to monitor that. Um, this would be a one-year memorandum of understanding. After six months, we'd sit down at EICC and discuss what it's looking like, is it working for both entities? Um, do they need the parking spaces for the following year? If not, do we wanna continue it? Or do we wanna look into expanding ours at that point? Is the money available at that point to expand that parking lot? Um, so there's ways to get in and ways to get out of this in both places. You would see that we would give them seventy-five hundred dollars on September first and they would bill us, invoice again, up for seventy-five hundred dollars on January first. Uh, so if it's continuing well, we then pay them that second round at that point. As I said, the money would go into their foundation, so they can use it as a way to help kids, whether through scholarship or a needs-based system. This is not uncommon. We have purchased land from them before and endowed a twenty-five thousand dollar scholarship, scholarship in the perpetuity for them, um, as ways to keep our partnership and land and, uh, we are good neighbors with each other. So, um, like I said, I believe where we landed is a good place, um, for us to make sure we have parking spots for all kids. Uh, you know, also with open enrolled kids, you know, they come in, that's not our first priority to have parking space for them, but this does allow, if they are open and rolling in, they now have a spot to park as well. Can we always guarantee we'll have parking spaces available for kids? No, um, it's not uncommon for schools in Davenport. You may have a school and only seniors get to drive to school. We are very fortunate to have what we have had over the past, um, which is a good thing, a blessing and also a curse. But again, I feel this is a way to move forward. So if you were to agree with this tonight, Scott Community College will take it to their board meeting, which I believe is next Monday night, and then we put in place beginning August twenty-third, uh, we would start communicating to families that we would have parking spaces for, I would anticipate, all sophomores, any junior and senior who wants to drive this coming year, that we'd have space for them. And then potentially some freshmen as they become, and able to, we'll watch that and see.
So you don't think we'll have to have like a lottery or anything like that for sophomores if we?
We would have enough parking spots with a hundred and fifty. I think that would put us up to, uh, let's see, if we have seven hundred and seventy-one, another hundred and fifty, that puts us at nine twenty-one. Um, that's a very good number. And again, we are growing some staff, so we lose some students because of staff as well. But we would be in a very good position with, as I said, seven hundred and ninety-two requests as of today. We typically have about sixty-eight percent of, over the years, the average is sixty-eight percent of our sophomores, juniors and seniors drive. So if that continues, that puts us at eight fifty-eight of the nine twenty-one.
And I actually think you'll probably have more that, I, 'cause I have a sophomore and I didn't even apply for one just because I knew that, like, the, I just didn't. So I think once this is out there, you're gonna get a flood of more people.
I would, I'd agree. So that's why, you know, we could've gone less than one fifty, but they were willing to give us one fifty, so we said, great. We'll take it and see where it goes.
I think this is a good solution, but you did hit on a point, a lot of high schools, not only in Iowa, throughout the country, seniors have the privilege, it is a privilege to drive in. When we're spending money, we're doing it wisely and we do have alternatives, continuing to educate on carpooling, especially with the bus or the cost of gas. We offer busing, so this is a good option, a whole bunch of people are gonna be happy. But we're not the only school district that faces this and oftentimes it is seniors, juniors, sophomores. I know when I went to high school, many moons ago, there was a priority and I'm sure some parents, if they stop and think, they would remember, there was a priority when they were students also.
And this is not something that we just don't forget about. I mean, we, we, when we add towers to the front of the high school, we know we're going to lose a number of parking spots again. It's just gonna happen. You know, so what does that look like in the future? And that's when you say, do you add on there, do you add on over here? When you get to the point, there's no ground and there's no other feasible option. But again, this is a, we have some space.
That fifty thousand dollar, again, looking at the cost associated with it, it's coming out of the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah. And we have that all, that, 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 can you cover that?
We do, yeah, between the part, the money we take in for parking spots already, maybe some of that, plus that's general fund dollars. So we'll work through that.
Yes. And this is only for one year, do they know that, um, it's successful that we may wanna consider pursuing this for years to come?
Yes, and that is why that is in position, we'll review it at six months. If it's working for them and it's working for us and we feel it's more cost-effective to do this for another year or two, besides building, 'cause, you know, we will be building a lot here in the near future, so what are our options and what's the best way to save money? Um, we will continue to look at that partnership if need be.
Do you know about how much we bring in? I haven't even looked at yet the cost for a parking spot, how much we bring in for parking spots that can offset this fifteen thousand dollar.
I'd, I'd have to look that up. Yeah, I'll just give you what we have for parking spots. If we use every single parking spot, it's seven hundred and seventy-one, times the fifteen dollars, that's eleven thousand five hundred dollars that we would bring in. Probably, yeah. Provided everyone's paying.
So we can increase the rate to twenty-five dollars and we can pay for it?
Or by grade, more for sophomores, less for seniors, but.
I'm not sure where the funding for the violation fines goes, but there's fines for violations as well, that I like, a number of. I don't know where that money goes, but I suspect it goes to the same place that the, so although fifteen dollars for the space, some people pay their fifteen and then they pay ten, and they pay ten.
Fifty to break.
Speaking, are you, are you okay monitoring another parking lot?
It, it won't increase my workload dramatically, um, because the parking lot is remote enough that, um, it, it will only be sophomores that are parking there and then maybe some freshmen who don't belong, who don't have a pass yet. So it won't, or it will increase my workload, and Brian had pointed out with the cameras, is when we add inexperienced drivers to our parking lots, we increase the number of collisions we have. Um, and so, uh, and that's just, that's just the way it is, right? So more space to worry about kids running into other cars is, it's the same, it, it'll be the same. The more kids, it's just gonna be more car accidents, that's just what's gonna happen, so.
And then, you know, you and I have been here on a Saturday night, monitoring some of the activity that occurs in the parking lot. Um, do you anticipate any issues with that parking lot and, and, um, and, uh, monitoring on the weekends?
I don't know what the memorandum of understanding says about after-school hours and our responsibility for that space.
Doesn't really say it.
Um, you know, um, I, we have seen it, as Mr. Strus had pointed out, the gates, whatever money we spent on those gates, it's a district, we, um, it was money well-spent because the number of complaints and concerns has dropped dramatically. Um, and I think most of our students have just moved whatever that activity is to somewhere else. And, and talking to Mr. Derek Robinson, who works at the college, I don't feel that they get complaints about it happening in their property. So I don't feel like they will move there. Um, most of those kids that we find that are doing that kind of stuff in the parking lots are upperclassmen anyway, so they won't really have that ownership to that parking lot, like this is our place to hang out. I, I don't anticipate that'll be a problem, um, but.
Is something we can clarify? Clarify in the memorandum that, you know, whose responsibility after, if, if it's not in there.
Well, there, there is something that says that if there is a, a PBH, a student, either having an issue with, like, a student or a staff member with, um, Eastern Iowa Community College, then both their administration, administration will get together and kind of come up with the next steps for its resolution. That's more like a student-to-student thing rather than this, but this could fall under that too.
Yeah, but some of the incidents, it's even other school district students being in our parking lot.
Most, most of the kids in the parking lot typically were not our students.
Right.
Yeah.
They're from across the river or other places, we were going through, it was just very unique.
Yeah, so we don't wanna have to be responsible for that parking lot after some time.
But again, I, I thank the high school staff for the letter they sent out and Jamie, we were trying to be proactive before summer came and it really did just finish with the snow fences and the.
Right, so.
Only thing, this is a great solution because we know a lot of parents were very concerned about this. Um, you know, and say, well, maybe we should increase bus ridership, but then that just creates. That creates a different type of, uh, issue probably, so, uh, this is a, this is a good, um, plan for this next year, I feel.
I'm afraid that if we didn't do this, we would have them parking in all of the neighborhoods around the area and we'd be good stewards and neighbors to our, um, right, so this is a nice solution for that as well. We're all, um, a lot of positives here.
Thank your high school administrators for working through this and making this possible, we really appreciate their work on this.
I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the Pleasant Valley Community School District and Eastern Iowa Community College, Scott Community College Memorandum of Understanding as presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board approve the Pleasant Valley Community School District and Eastern Iowa Community College, Scott Community College Memorandum of Understanding as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Dr. Wogly.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Great, um, so future dates, um, Monday, August twenty-second is our next board meeting here at six PM. We also have another one on, um, Monday, September twelfth at six PM. And then, uh, this upcoming Wednesday, as, um, Ms. Damon, I think, mentioned, or Mr. Strus mentioned, um, the new teacher breakfast, um, is, um, upon us at the, uh, Bettendorf, um, uh, at the Bettendorf Children's. I'm at the, at the museum, yeah. And that will be at seven thirty, so if you have an RSVP and wanna go, then please let, uh, Ms. Damon know. Uh, and that's really about it, is there anything else for the good of the order? Not?